All right, I will open this study session of the Historic Preservation Commission at 6:31. We just have one study session topic. Do you want to take it away, Sarah?
Yeah, so gonna go over just kind of starting the discussion for some of the ULUC and major minor chart amendments. Kind of discussion, opening with a few questions. And then I had a few recommendations, but haven't delved deep into kind of wording on those. Just wanted to get a sense of where everyone was at and if there are any other ideas. So first, I'm just running through some questions. Tonight's gonna be pretty discussion heavy. This is just kind of more just cue points for us. So the first kind of big thing is what do we think is working well with this process? With the certificate of appropriate process? You guys definitely come in at the, towards the end of the process, but kind of what you're seeing. Is there anything that's like, we're good? You can also go into the not good part. That's next, but.
Is that, is that, is that a question?
Yeah, yeah, so just kind of any kind of, yeah, just general.
So it looks to me, since we come at the end, it looks as though once they come up before us, the applicants have a pretty clear idea of what it is that they're, what they're supposed to be meeting. And so I like so far that there are very few surprises. You know, by the time they get here, it's probably all, it's usually one that you're already, in fact, 99.9% of the time, you're already recommending, we think the COA is appropriate, it needs these and these criteria, you know, and sometimes there's discussion, but generally, I like that that's buttoned up. Now, but I just said, it looks as though everybody understands it once they're up here. And that may be true, but that's the tip of the iceberg. So do people understand it? Like, how's it going?
Yeah, I think people do. I think kind of beginning of last summer, we had a couple of applications that were a little bit more rough than some of that was. A little bit of learning kind of what applicants need to be, kind of like education kind of needs to be done during the process. And so I think really having the folks there that can answer all the questions. Now, mind you, they don't always all show up. We make that recommendation. But sometimes, for whatever reason, they don't kind of bring those folks in, which totally happens. You guys can exercise your kind of decision powers of saying, let's wait and let's get more information, which we did a few times, which works great. My goal with the process is to bring you guys an application that is as kind of buttoned up as possible per our criteria. Noting that sometimes there's gonna be questions. Sometimes certain information doesn't get shared with me, and then they say something in the meeting. That does happen a few times. Which is always a little bit shocking for me as well. So I try to get across kind of all the information that's needed. We look at the criteria, make sure everything works. One thing with this, though, is I do, it's kind of our practice to provide that recommendation. And generally, that recommendation is in the affirmative. But if there's ever kind of questions or you don't agree with the interpretation of that criteria, always feel free to kind of, that's that good point for discussion. That's why we do also bring it before the HPC to make decisions on certain things. But generally, yeah, I am trying to get the applicant to kind of understand everything that will likely go into it. If I think there might be questions that might pop up, I try to let them know. But also kind of let them know, like, this is my recommendation. You guys are the kind of deciding entity, so things can change. And you guys have definitely changed and kind of shifted recommendations here and there, which is totally fine and absolutely within your purview and what your role should be. So I think for right, now everything is kind of working. We're trying to, kind of, this is on a kind of more internal side of things, but we do have certain kind of deadlines, and we're just trying to kind of working on keeping them a little bit more to those deadlines. There is some kind of leeway given, and as much as I want to help an applicant as quickly as possible through the process, we also sometimes have to take that step back and say, staff needs a little bit more time to make sure that we can give you guys something that is fully fleshed out.
What is the time range that you've experienced in the year and a half you've been here? Between the fastest applicant to decision and maybe the slowest or typical? Just to give us a sense of how, how many months in advance have you started working on something with an applicant before it gets to us?
Yeah, probably the fastest was about a month. Essentially, the deadline day I got something and it was okay enough to kind of move forward with. My preference is to generally have about two months, that at least. Kind of, because we do pre-application meetings. They're not the kind of formal ones we necessarily require for kind of larger development type projects, but there needs to be a meeting that's set up that I can kind of go over the process with them and the application. And then I love to see a draft before that final application kind of deadline comes in or application sent in, just so I can. A lot of times, it's just going over the criteria with them, kind of saying, this is where I think there could be a hinge point, like, this may or may not work. What is something, if you made this shorter, what is that? Could that look like, et cetera? And I think some of the projects that have come in have been relatively simple, so some of that back and forth hasn't happened quite as much. So generally, that kind of like six to eight week timeline is probably more accurate. These are much shorter kind of processes than some of our, what goes to like, say, the Planning Commission. That sometimes takes months and months of review before we get it to a point that we can bring it before. These applications aren't quite as detailed. It's just, it's the exterior, it's kind of this aesthetic piece of it, so they're, they're able to go a little bit faster. I also function on a little bit too of the historic preservation is, and kind of being designated, I think is a great benefit for the community, for that property owner or that person who's using that building. It is an extra step that others don't necessarily have to go through, so it's a really important step. But I do try to keep it moving as much as possible, because it is a, as much as the absolute benefits of preservation are great for a community, it's a slight bit of a downside for folks. So it's trying to keep them moving as fast as possible, so that it doesn't kind of hang them up at all.
I know that you're saying that one of the applications took a month, which, I mean, I know is startling, but it, being a property owner and dealing with tenants, I mean, that's 30 days of huge cost and benefit to each party. And then I'm also aware that a lot of the people who've come in front of us have spoken about it taking up to three months to get before us, which then you're looking at three months of property taxes and three months of bills that are included in that. And that really creates a holdup in terms of leasing. So, I mean, I get that a month sounds great, but I think that should be the goal, because we don't want to hinder businesses coming down to Main Street.
Right.
And being able to do it promptly, because I, I've specifically had tenants who are opposed to signing leases because they have to wait the stagnant amount of time to come before us.
Right, and I, so the part of the month, that is kind of from application deadline to the hearing. So at that point, that's because, and that timing kind of included is because it's, we have to notice, so it's getting the, it's getting that kind of process out, making sure everything's within 700 feet, et cetera, doing that correctly. And then it's also putting together the report and kind of having that go through the review process. So I think, so the one part where it's kind of a, I would love a six to eight week timeline is just because you, that kind of, like, it can happen in a month. Someone can turn in a great application on that kind of deadline day.
Well, I've heard like even to the point that they'll put in the application, but then the docket's full for that month, so they're pushed to the next month.
I have not had that happen here yet. Since I, since we've been here, I've not had that happen. Issues with getting pushed to the next month is often because of that timeline. Because some of the more recent ones and the concerns about time was just that.
They've done like three or four, I don't wanna.
Yeah, I will bring multiple. I mean, we don't really have a docket as full kind of limit in my mind. So I will, if we get everything in, we can, we can go through them. It'll just be a longer meeting?
Yeah.
And that may have been prior to me being here, but my goal is always to, unless it's like, it may just be a, if we have a lot on there, it may be a, the HPC may decide to say, it's too late, we have to pause.
Yeah, I just have.
I will stay here as long as y'all need me to.
Yeah, and I, I, don't get me wrong, I'm not fighting on that end. I'm, I'm just basing it off of what I've heard from like the property owner standpoint on it. And I wonder if there's a way that we could like expedite the process or possibly meet, like have emergency meetings so that we don't lose out on like good businesses wanting to come down to Main. Like, if we were more accommodating to.
And we could build some criteria around that, like especially if it's your second or third time coming to get approvals from us. That we try to help that out, because that could be a real bummer if you, you know, waited two months, then you have something else that comes up. Thinking of one of our cases, and then maybe later a year.
That was the very situation, that contentious one may have a couple of months.
Yeah, so maybe have some kind of like way of escalating folks that have needed to see us multiple times.
Yeah, because like I know personally, signing with Denver Beer Company, like their biggest obstacle was figuring out how to come before us. And I wasn't on it at that time. This is why I actually got involved, because I started hearing about the other stuff. But it was just like, you know, the appreh, and it's not based on Littleton, it's based off of dealing with historic's in other counties as well. Is there's a lot of, it feels too big and scary, and I think if there's a way that we could benefit from making it more easily acceptable or more fast-paced, it could be really beneficial.
I think that probably also depends, though, on what is being presented. Like if they have a reputable architect that gives us like all of the nice drawings and stuff, I feel like that's different than, you know, somebody who's trying to do it on their own kind of thing, you know, so I think.
How much teeth pulling goes on, on your end to get the application up to par?
Generally, it's not too awful. It is, it is very dependent on the architect. It's dependent on if you have someone who has gone through this process elsewhere. And the ones that kind of had the biggest hurdles often don't have an architect or a person on that is aware of kind of what. And I do my best to try to get that across as much as possible. And so it's really that kind of quality of the application and how fast we can review and potentially turn that around, et cetera. And so it's, it's, it's very dependent upon the applicant, I would say. I do my best to try to get kind of back and forth. I also, and this is not the best excuse. There is a slight expect, like, staff is working on also a variety of other projects. So sometimes it takes me a few days to kind of get to something, and so it's kind of a little bit of a capacity thing and a little bit of, we're gonna try to move as quickly as possible.
Right.
But that kind of month lead up time, we may not have much control over. Because you have to be able to notice it 10 days in advance. Anything that comes here has to be noticed to, at least 10 days in advance. Via postcard. And so that also has a printing process involved, so there's a few things that every once in a while, I really wish we could shorten it, but it is just kind of that mechanics piece, so if I can get them as quickly as possible to that month, I will do that. And we have had some, some leeway. I don't like to, but I will as much as possible work with applicants. I think our shortest one is actually probably a couple of days less than a month, actually, for the first time seeing it, so. I will do what I can.
Since you're most intimate with it, are there any things you can see with like your side of the process? The way that the application, its usability, like redundant areas, do you see anything like that? That you're like, oh, this is sort of stupid, inefficient, or could be done better?
No, I mean, our application, so we use an online e-track it. And so that's kind of where they put the information. The attachments that we generally get are kind of that plan set, the elevations, a couple narratives. No comment on that. And so it is definitely, I, I think we have gotten it in terms of what needs to be submitted as pared down as possible. I, it's, that plan set and the narratives are the two big key pieces, like the three kind of key things. And are generally very common across any jurisdiction you go to. It's gonna have similar kind of type requirements. So that's, I think we're good on in terms of kind of what gets submitted, unless you guys would like to see more or less of anything.
But we, I feel like we're just so treated to these beautiful presentations that are all nicely buttoned up. And I wasn't here really before you, so that's, I think, you.
Thanks. I tried.
On this timeline question, are applicants given a date? That if you applicant get your application in by X day, and the application is proper, you know, you've checked all the boxes, you will be on this meeting agenda? Okay, so they know well in advance, I gotta do my part by X, and if I do, they'll be on it. So there isn't this huge gray area of discretion for the planning department to be like, oop, I didn't get to it. You have to wait. That doesn't happen, right, okay. I think that's sort of.
No, but I think if we're gonna bring up the situation that we all really remember, is that it was Brett, and he had gotten an approval and gotten to the teardown and found something out so that the plan wasn't applicable, and it, so it was a change of plan coming back to us. And so I don't know if like, in those situations where somebody's, I mean, it seems crazy to me that somebody's building a plan off of the idea of something that's under a wall that hasn't been maintained for 50 years. That feels crazy. That we're basing it off of that without doing better discovery, I guess?
So I, I would say with that kind of project, as much as I can say, or kind of general, I'll keep it in general terms of projects, similar to that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When you have those kind of facades that are there, it's common practice to not allow you to pull that off until you have a COA in place. Because if you pull that off, whatever's left could be worse than what's up there. And have you now left a building that has to go back in and stabilize. That is actually exceptionally common practice. Now, and I don't know how this functions on other buildings. We don't review what goes on on the inside, so there's always expiration that can be done from the inside out, potentially. Depends on, you know, it's building specific on that front. So yeah, and that is unfortunately a risk you take with historic buildings.
Right.
So that is kind of like, I have, I, and that's why it's like, we will try to work through, and that was a very, that was the past application. And so like, we will work with them as much as possible, and definitely did on that one. And so taking that into account, that yes, we have seen this pieces before, et cetera. But also noting that this is what, when you own a building within a historic district, kind of the process. That building itself, that facade was actually contributing as well. So it was, that's another reason why we weren't necessarily gonna say, pull this off immediately, because it was considered a contributing building with those facade additions. So that's another thing too, that would be like removing historic material, and that's again, going to be common across jurisdictions.
I think the part that, I mean, if I'm being specific is that.
Well, I don't, I don't think we can be specific.
Okay.
Just because it may come back before us again, so if we could make it as general as possible.
Well, I would observe that it's easy to get in front of city staff or a city commission and say, it's taken so long, it's taken so long. But we don't have the power to move an applicant faster through the part of the process that is the applicant's responsibility. All staff and commission can do is say, these are the things that the ordinance or the law requires. If you do that in a week, I'll move quickly. But if it takes you three months to, to meet all these criteria, don't say the city took three months. The city didn't take any time. The applicant needed the time the applicant took. But you can't be held responsible for that being some sort of delay.
Well, there's also the city's process as far as the other parts of the COA that come before us that could, that are, I'm not aware of how long it takes or what their procedures are. For getting their, like, for code and et cetera, all those.
Like building permit?
Quite a bit of process before they land with us.
Yeah.
Although, does the COA come first?
Yes, so generally speaking, the COA is the kind of first step. Because if you go through the building permit and something needs to be changed, it's.
Where is this place that happens when they come to us and there is a specific piece of building code that they're also trying to adhere to? Like, oh, the code says I have to have this done in a certain way, and in order to do this on this type of building, I have to come to you for approval, right? When does that happen in the process? My assumption was there's quite a bit they go through beforehand, so that they understand building code and where they are aligned or that or not.
So generally, because we're dealing with exteriors of buildings, building code is not as large of concern. I know there have been things that have popped up that have had to change, an opening size or kind of lip, et cetera. Generally, with it being more exterior stuff, and if you have an architect who's doing the drawings, which we generally always do, they're aware of that piece. Now, if it is a larger project that may have, you're putting a large addition on, you're doing X, Y, and Z, that pre-application meeting, I've been, I've invited our building officials to before, to say, do you see, is there something that's going to pop up that could be of concern? Most of the time, with it being exterior, you're not running into as many of these like very large kind of building code concerns. So generally, kind of in the process, it is a, you go through the COA kind of piece first, and then it goes before building for review. I've yet to run into one that has been kind of kicked back because of like building code issues. Trying to think of a, one example would be kind of, ADU, we did downtown kind of thing. Like that had a full pre-app met with, because our engineering staff even had some concerns. Like, so we all work closely enough that I can pull them in if it seems like there's going to be a concern or if I have questions.
If it's an addition, it would be new construction, so you could just make the plans adhere to code, right? Because otherwise, it would just be.
Yeah, and then, yeah, anything new built will, will meet current building code. I've not ran into anything yet in terms of kind of having to figure out how building code will work with historic building, in terms of kind of wanting to maintain that. That is often, again, more an internal issue to the building a lot of the times, as opposed to kind of the external changes that we see. Because again, we can, they can gut the inside of a building. We have no control, unless it touches the outside at all. So that's kind of where that pops up a, a lot. Not, not to mean that it couldn't come up, the building code doesn't need to be, or building folks need to be pulled in to say, hey, they're proposing this, this feels like it could be an issue. Yes or no? In terms of that.
I'm trying to not make this specific. In terms of aesthetic codes for the exterior of the building that have come before us, that either feel not applicable or are already not being adhered to by historic buildings on Main Street, how do we have the, like, if, if somebody, a new applicant would have to follow a code that doesn't apply to current people? Is that how that works?
Not, what, specifically what code are we talking about? The zoning or a building code? Are we just switching to zoning?
If 15 feet have to be occupied, like every 15 feet, something.
So, so the downtown code, downtown design code is, is.
Okay, yeah.
When we say downtown code, it's all for the downtown zoning districts. That goes beyond just Main Street and the historic district.
Correct.
So it is a code that works kind of broadly for all of these districts, and it is meant for new construction and alterations. I'm gonna, I've switched to one of the recommendations, because I have a recommendation for this that I think will allow us to not necessarily get into the meat of kind of those pieces of code that seem to work better for new construction or new additions on buildings. But to essentially say that those properties that are designated, whether individually or within a district, within the kind of four downtown, it's downtown Main Street, downtown transition area, downtown mixed use, and downtown neighborhood residential are the four. To essentially say that if you're designated, if you have an approved COA, you can ignore these design standards. You can pull from them, you can look at them. We may say, this one fits within the design, so you should still follow this standard as part of alteration, but that's one of, one of my recommendations. Because I also had frustration with the pieces of code.
Yeah.
Like it is, you are not the only ones, and so we.
It felt like people were trying to fill a page of code.
Gotcha, and that is, and that does speak to, I, I understand where that piece of code specifically generally, especially when you have very pedestrian scale type buildings, where you're wanting to have things that are closer to the street, et cetera, large expanses of blank wall, isn't the most comfortable. There are moments in downtown where it is accurate, that historically this would have been predominantly blank with two small windows. And so, which is actually where we got to with that one, we were able to do an adjustment on that, a staff level COA. I think I, I think I mentioned this previously, but we did a staff level COA, so they actually got rid of that piece entirely, and are restoring it, restoring it more closely to what it was. It's using the existing, those two small window openings. Great. It was able to fit, it had the distance, solid. And so moving forward, a, a process that could be done is to just kind of enumerate in the code that these standards may be waived, proposed alterations receive a COA, which means they meet the downtown design guidelines, they meet SOI standards, they meet the other criteria within the code. And it kind of accounts for the fact that these buildings are kind of weird sometimes, because they were built well before zoning codes existed.
They're wild on the inside.
It affords for discretion.
Correct, yeah, and then.
Subject in maybe waived, who waives? The applicant or staff and commission?
The staff.
So it would be through that approval of the COA. It would be staff saying, this is.
An applicant can't come and say, I'm waiving all these things.
No, the applicant can propose a design and I can say, yes.
Yes.
And for the most part.
Exactly, but I just.
Yeah.
That's important.
Would we have to approve it if you waive it?
It just, it has to receive a, the way, again, I haven't gotten into the minutia of the language. This is maybe slightly more of an absolute attorney kind of question. But how I would see this working would be, we just take this application through the process. I can apply the code if the code works without it causing too many issues, great. If it doesn't, and it meets all of our criteria to receive a COA. That COA essentially kind of supersedes those standards within our code. Because those standards are more meant for new construction additions. It does note alterations, and I think that's the biggest piece that makes sense for buildings not designated. So I didn't want to completely remove that language that included alterations. And instead adding in a provision to say, hey, if you receive a COA, you don't have to necessarily kind of go through. Kind of a, a process of trying to figure out how to make our code work or go through a process of receiving a waiver with our director. It's a more one-stop shop kind of way of going forward.
Does the applicant know your final recommendation?
Yes.
Before they get here?
Yes, they, they, um. Yes, generally, if, it's generally the goal, and this is the goal of kind of any application that we bring before. Any kind of commission or city council, et cetera, is that our goal is to get the applicant to an application that staff can recommend approval. So if I don't recommend approval, I will let you know and let you know that you are applying and submitting against the recommendation of staff. But an applicant, if they hit all the check marks of like the pieces that are needing for, needed for an application. And it's not causing any kind of, wouldn't cause any kind of zoning code violations otherwise. I can bring it forward and would have a recommendation to say, I don't think this meets all the criteria. It's your kind of decision, now if it's a staff level one, it's me saying no until they show me kind of it meets the criteria.
It'll be fun just to let someone through. Think it would be fun.
Uh huh, yeah.
And they walk in here, we don't like it. Isn't that some kind of a conflict between what they thought that they were, what they had?
Nope, because I also let them know that I make a recommendation of approval, but I'm not the one who's ultimately making the decision. And so there could be conditions or changes in that approval once they come before the commission. So I definitely, I never make a, I I will never tell anyone, yes, this is going to get approved when you go in front of them. Because I don't know.
They know from the beginning that they're gonna, that somebody's gonna have to approve it, either staff or us.
And it always comes down to a very specific standard that you're either meeting or not, right? Your analysis always goes through boo boo boo, every single standard, meets, meets, meets. Maybe one's a little gray and you'll say meets with condition, right? Um, so if we were to reject staff's recommendation. We have to say in our conversation, and this is what the mayor got so fussy about the other day. If you're gonna object, you have to indicate which standard you don't, we don't believe the applicant is meeting.
Correct.
It can't just be a generalized, nope.
Yep.
Well, because then there's the appeal process, and if we don't make enough of a case to reject it, then it would be very easily overturned.
Right.
So.
Well, who next?
Oh, she's pacing us.
Yeah, no, that's totally fine.
You've done really good.
Well, thank you.
I'm curious if it's appropriate to have like updates on, like when construction is starting for COAs that are approved. Um, cause you know, I, I, like, to just have updates on COAs that we approve, like when the construction actually starts or.
Do they actually go forward with it or not?
Yeah, cause there have been a couple that we've done that it's been like close to a year before they start. And so it just would be nice to know, hey, construction started, or oh, it's, you know, what, just maybe some updates about what's going on.
I don't always know the exact when construction will start, but I do see when it comes in for building permits. And if they've been approved to receive a building permit and can then start construction. So I can let you know about that piece, absolutely of kind of saying, yeah, status updates, I can have that included in the regular meetings.
So if we voted on a COA for a particular project. It goes on a list that Sarah keeps, and then when Sarah sees a building permit, uh, milestone hit, then it goes on your staff report back to us.
Yep, yeah, it'll probably be kind of the staff kind of comment period at our regular meetings, I can say kind of the COA.
And can we get a plaque outside of that building that has our names on it?
Cause every building that has a COA, you know.
That we approved.
I have a kind of a twofold question, I mean, there's been a, a couple of, um. Applicants where we have asked that they go make an adjustment and come back to us in a month. And I think that's only happened where there's been a month in between. But as I'm thinking about what you were saying, Kline, I'm like, oh, you know, to preserve more of the facade of this building, could you relocate where you're thinking the entryway should be? And so forth and so on, we've had a couple of those where we've deferred them for another month. And in my mind, it was a chance for them to kind of get their ducks in a row and have a second shot. But I'm also wondering if that's maybe, um. Minutia that could be super irritating, it's not minutia necessarily, but the time lapse of it being a month could be super irritating. Um, for folks that are on more of a hustle.
Could they make the adjustment in the meeting that we recommend and it get approved?
We, we approve with conditions, Sarah makes sure they meet those conditions before they get a permit.
Yeah, and I feel like if there are changes that are made in the meeting, they aren't necessarily posted for the public to see and review and make comment on. And if it's something like, like an entryway or an exit or windows, like those are things that. Yeah, like we, we would want them to take the time to make sure that they were maintaining that historic.
And that's kind of up to y'all on how you would like to handle that, to your point. If it's a larger change, it may be something that you want to see kind of how, if you were shifting a door, how does that relate to everything else that's going on? Um, but if it's a minor tweak of saying, let's move this over a few inches, that can be made as a condition. So there is, it is twofold, it is kind of, it's kind of a scale. If it is large enough that you feel like, oh, this really needs to be seen again, absolutely, um.
Have we done those since you and I have been on the commission?
We've had issues, I think.
We've done some conditions.
Right.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've done some.
But not where we require them to come back to us for.
Yes, we had, we had, we, we had one that was continued a few times.
Yeah, there were, yeah.
Over color?
Not over color, over, um, provision of information and making, and it just wasn't clear, um, certain things weren't clear.
And I think new.
What do you mean by police is the stuff?
Okay, contractor was, contractor agrees to a certain thing, works it out with us, goes out there. If he deviates from that, whose responsibility is that, the building inspector?
Um, so mine, so I'll go out and look at when a, when a project is finished generally. Um, we'll go out and kind of double check that it was done correctly. We, any, um, conditions. That are set for the COA will need to be added to a final plan set, and that gets updated and I review to make sure that it matches. What was discussed here, what was originally submitted for the COA. As part of the building permit process, I also then again go back in review to make sure that it meets the building permit. Generally speaking, folks aren't making those changes once they've received a building permit. Because it could also affect the building, like the building inspector may also go out and say, hey, that's not correct. Um, and so, because what happens after the approval? Um, and Paige is aware of this because she signs the COAs, but generally it's, yeah, I reach back out and say, here's the conditions. Or there weren't any conditions, make sure you have our standard notes, um, the correct signature blocks on it. And we send it out to say, it's all ready to go, go forth. Um, and then when I receive the building permit, it's again lining those up to match and make sure that they are consistent between the two. Um, generally. Um. You don't run into that too much, I've never really, in my career, haven't really had too much of an issue with that. Um.
I think we have, it's been years ago, but I think we have some windows downtown that are.
Yeah, that were put up wrong.
Uh huh, uh huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are a couple, I mean, long before I think any of us were around, but there are a couple. Or there were promises made that it was gonna be done one way and then it was done another way. So, but this was like in the early two thousands, I think.
Yeah, it was shortly before I did.
Been on it.
Okay.
Early teens.
Okay.
We had one since we've been on it.
Yes, and that one came back for like a retroactive COA.
Yeah.
Which is also a way of doing, I've had previous place I've worked, Macon, when I was in Macon, I had someone. Do something essentially without a COA windows, and we had to make them take out everything and redo it all.
Oh, wow.
And that is not my goal ever, I didn't like that, that was rough. Um, we came to a compromise with that in terms of. Oh, they replaced every single window on their building and we made them put the original ones back in on the front and then let them keep the side and rear ones.
Wow, how did that discussion go though?
It's not the first time I've had someone cry for me. So, but like that's a very rare occasion, and that's what is helpful of trying to get out in kind of front of this stuff. And when an applicant comes in, um, making them as aware, aware as possible, most people understand that they're in historic districts. Um, when they do, obviously we see predominantly downtown, and I think everyone's fairly aware of. They're part of that, unfortunately, much like any other kind of thing, if you do work without a permit, it may require kind of a code process. Um, oh, sorry, oh, no, no, I was just gonna say, it's a trade off.
Yeah.
Does the city keep track of the owners of the, of historic buildings? And like, would there ever be like a proactive reach out to say like, hey, we have a historic planning department. If you ever have any questions about, you know, making changes to your building, here's our contact information.
I think that would align nicely to the item on our work plan that says outreach and education.
Uh huh. I think that would be really important, and I think that list needs to be updated because I do know that the city has a list. Um, of tenants and property owners, and it's not accurate.
Right, so we are not notified when properties are sold, and so that's one piece of it. Um, we could periodically, uh, tax assessors' records would have the property owner. Um, that would be the only one that I would be able to kind of maybe pull from specifically. Um, and sometimes that has a lag in terms of when it gets updated.
I can get.
And even like annually, just like the kind of tenant piece is where, that's very hard to track. Although, but the thing is, is that. A tenant cannot apply without property owner approval, so the more important piece is the property owner.
Right.
Um, and that is a bit easier to.
And I think like just knowing the questions that come up in that, that negotiation about it. Like if the property owner is better informed, it can sound less scary.
That's right.
Cause like Denver. I've heard is very difficult to get permits, and when people have dealt with them and they hear that they have to come to a historic here, they don't want to touch it. So I think if the property owners are up to date and understand how it works, that communication process is a lot easier.
And I feel like if there's like a name or even just like the planning department, here's our phone number, I feel like that makes it less like. Black, I, I don't know a better way to say it, like you're not like, you're not just like going into like a black abyss of, you know.
No, I know that like when we were meeting with DBC, Jesse Sheetz had to come out, like we needed a lot of help. Because they were really spooked about the permit process with historic. And so like, you guys were incredibly helpful, but like I think. I don't know if every property owner would feel inclined to seek that type of help and just kind of, I don't know.
What do you think the N is, the number of commercial properties that are designated that we would have to keep a list of?
I think it's like.
Is it a hundred, is it?
Like fifty, maybe?
It's all of downtown and then, not all of, but within the downtown district. And then Louton would be the other district, and then I think there's about thirty to thirty-three individually designated properties.
Yeah.
On top of those, so properties as a whole. Eighty to one twenty-five, I think, um.
Commercial versus residential, what would break down?
Oh, I think it's, it's, yeah, it's prim- primarily downtown, mostly individually designated.
A lot of them are double O, like there's more than one owner, so they're like.
Yeah, and so we, it does parcel out, so the part, so that kind of tax assessor map will show the individual. And sometimes someone may get redundancy in terms of if somebody gets sent to them, just because owners may be same person but different.
That's the idea.
Um, but yeah, and then of course with downtown too, like there's, there's a few other resources we can maybe tap into, LDDA, things like that, so. Yeah, and I would say.
Tax assessors, I mean, they send that bill out.
But that's county.
It's county.
Yeah, but you can publicly search it on a Rappahannock County, you just type in the address. Problem solved.
Go for it.
It doesn't indicate, the tax assessor's website does not indicate if something is locally designated though.
You would know the address.
You'd have to start with the address and.
You could just put in the address, you'd know the addresses are locally designated, you type them in.
Yeah, I can, I can, like getting the addresses, not hard, that's fine.
No.
Um, and the property owner.
Half of the owners right now.
I think this is a great job for Kalina.
Oh, I love it. Let me, I'll get him to come to a meeting.
Oftentimes, there's, we do have a few, like a lot of people generally, like if they're aware of it being historic, they can, they, or it, information is on the website. I, it, they will reach out to our general kind of number and email, and it immediately gets directed to me. Building permits, if someone makes an application for a building permit. Um, it immediately gets flagged if it's designated in our system and I can reach out and kind of like, I'll always be on there for that review. So we're definitely, would love to catch people prior to them applying for a building permit, but we will at least catch them then and can let them know. Um.
It could even be a letter from the chairperson of the commission.
Yeah.
Wanting to introduce herself, um.
Invite her to lunch.
Say how much we appreciate our locally designated, and I'm focused on commercial more than residential because residential don't turn over that often. And they're already gonna be very oriented to having to get a.
Right.
So this, for me, this idea really is beautiful for commercial property owners.
Yeah.
Which is a smaller N, so fewer names to have to list. And then just by way of language signaling that we really want to be easy, helpful, cooperative, et cetera, et cetera. To sort of get rid of that stigma of, oh shit.
Honestly, I love it.
Well, I, I was gonna say, it's only relevant to them though, when they actually are likely to.
To do something.
To do something, right, because it's not like a floodplain where you find out about it because you need to get insurance or, you know, when you buy.
Yeah, but. It goes more than average, at least it's five years, so if there's. If you're looking at turnover for every tenant, there's at least six every year on Main Street.
I think, are you saying it's a good idea because you wouldn't know about us otherwise?
I'm saying it's a good, I, I don't know if the owners will actually pay attention to an outreach. Like, in other words, let's say you send a postcard to everybody and say, just so you know, you're in a historic.
Well, we're not trying to get compliance, we're really just trying to signal to folks a positive vibe from this commission.
Well, I have no objection to it.
No, but I think they would because I think more and more we're getting faced with tenants who are aware of it and have more apprehension about it. So I, it, like it never used to come up, and now it comes up no matter what.
You keep saying tenants, and we're not communicating with tenants, we're communicating with the.
No, I get it, but generally speaking, the tenant is the one doing the improvements to the building.
That's right.
Yeah.
Right, but we.
To meet what they want.
It's up to the owner whether or not they pass along our communication to their tenant.
But if a tenant is paying a price per square foot, I support them.
But, and I also think what she's saying is if she's trying to sign a tenant into one of the buildings, she could say, the, the. I have information about the Historic Preservation Board, I, I understand this process.
The owner uses it as a, as a persuasive bit to say, no, 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 don't worry about historic.
Yes. Not persuasive, but just to have some knowledge on it, because I think the stories that come from other counties are what we can't.
I get it.
Yeah, and I think it just would create easier discussion to be like, hey, like, cause it would be a lot easier for me to say, listen to everything Sarah says. Instead of her preaching the rule of being like, you need an architect and you need to draw like this, then the landlord can say it. Like it can create more, like back and forth to get it done faster.
So it's a way to support our local commercial property owners as they are out there looking for.
Correct.
Good tenants.
Right.
Got it.
And to help you communicate with them in a firm but effective way.
Let's go to vinyl.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Like a record?
So we've already gone over kind of that first one, and it sounded like positive consensus.
Yes.
Great.
Thumbs up.
We trust you, Sarah.
Great, the, uh, second one is something that I've ran into.
Will it require a vote by us or someone else to make this change to the UOUC, or is it staff discretion?
Eventually, yes, this will need to, I will double check, I believe it's the Planning Commission. Who ultimately makes the recommendation to the city council. I need to double check if you guys also need to make that recommendation as well, I don't think per our code you're required to, so I don't know how formal it would be.
Regardless of us, city council has to vote on this, oh, okay, got it. Regardless of us, city council has to vote on this. Oh, okay, got it.
Yep, um, so some of these changes may not happen like absolutely immediately kind of thing. It's gonna take a minute. We have to kind of work into. Our schedule of bringing things to council. Um, but generally, yes, the process will be public hearing with planning commission. They make that recommendation and then city council goes through. What's called a first reading and a second reading, um, and the second reading is where the public hearing is. Um, and then they make recommendations, et cetera.
Before that goes to the planning commission, if we don't need to make a recommendation, could we still just view the language?
Hundred percent, yeah, you guys will kind of before we take it beyond planning commission, you guys will all sign off. I just don't know. Administratively, how formal that sign off needs to be. But you guys will have the kind of final say before it goes to them, for sure. Um, and so for the vinyl. Vinyl decal signage, um, for applied to interior windows. So right now, that kind of vinyl decal is not allowed on windows in downtown. Um, what is allowed is, I should have had that up in front of me, apologies, um. No, um. In terms of window signs. So window signs on glazing shall either be silk screened, back painted, metal leafed, or sand blasted onto the glass. Vinyl vinyl letters or other types of applications are prohibited.
And that's where, where is that requirement housed?
So that is in our, um, the downtown sign zoning code. And so what I've heard from, um, sign companies so far. Is that that is relatively prohibitive. Vinyl decals is a relatively affordable method, um, of signage. It can look. It it stems from, we've all seen the kind of vinyl decal that doesn't look great. It do, it happens, um, it also happens that a lot of different signage doesn't look great at times, um. And so one thing that was noted with some of these in terms of how it's kind of handled, back painted and metal leafed. From a labor standpoint, quite expensive, um, as well as the other two, but like silk screened. Heat is applied to the window for that to be included. Um, and then sand blasted also clearly is etching into the glass essentially. And they essentially noted that oftentimes if that type of signage needs to be replaced, they are more apt to just take out the entire glass piece and put a new window in. Which again, cost prohibitive and depending on, um, age of the glass, type of glass, it may not be ideal. Um, and so vinyl letters is kind of being proposed or vinyl decal signage. Which is being proposed as an option, um, and I would say with it specifically. Applied to the interior of the window to kind of prevent as much of that kind of weathering damage as possible. Um, but in terms of making things a little bit easier for downtown, uh, property and tenants, mostly the tenants probably are the ones paying for it. That might be a way of of kind of, um, easing things a bit. And again, relatively temporary. You can safely scrape vinyl off. Some of these other methods, again, it's easier or more likely to. Um, I mean, sand blasted, it's you're altering the glass. It looks great. I'm not saying get rid of that as an option. Cause it definitely looks nice, but it is something where it would be, could we open this up? Um, for a few folks and I and I know, I mean, I'm sure there's probably some in downtown. We can't catch anything. But we also do not get complaints about signage in downtown most of the time, so.
Different qualities of vinyl. I know that sounds crazy.
No, yeah.
Um, like I know that there's some that like people can stick on themselves. Like, you know, like, I'm just thinking of people when they like tent their windows and it looks like trash and then.
Or like a cut it from with your cricket.
Right, yeah, 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 like is there a way that we can require this to be? A certain skill of vinyl.
Yeah, I can, I can definitely look in and kind of see what that is.
Like a commercial grade vinyl.
So when we see buildings that have painted onto their windows advertisement, is that not? Listed in our sign recommendations or are they?
Back painted is allowed, um.
Does back paint just mean on the interior rather than exterior?
So yes.
What'd you say?
You don't think vinyl at all? Why?
I just think it's an opportunity for some real cheesy looking, you know, signage. That's what I think.
And would there not be a catch or a stopgap to prevent cheesy vinyl? Or once we.
I just mean cheesy, cheesy colors, cheesy designs.
So I would say.
If the code was left in place the way it is, you're gonna get a more upscale signage.
Because the investment is more.
Because again, you could get really crazy colors, crazy, you know, design.
You can do things with vinyl that you can't with these other methods. You can do things with vinyl that you can't with the other methods and therefore it could get pretty wacky as.
So I would say in terms of signage, um, this is a. Came down from the feds kind of thing, um, we can't look at content per se. So we can look at material and size. Um, and kind of how it's kind of material size, dimensions, things of that nature, if it is. Kind of branding for a business or not, because murals kind of hit a little snag with that, but. Um, in terms of actual design and how it looks or in content, we legally do not have control of that. For any signage, like anywhere in the country, generally speaking.
Right, but what I hear Robert saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is if all you have available is. Uh, etching, uh, what was the gold plating one?
Gold leafing.
Gold leafing, sandblasting, et cetera. If those are your only options. It's pretty hard to get wacky with those options. If we add vinyl. And have no control over content, color, et cetera, then this whole world of wacky has opened up in a way it didn't exist before.
But I think that that's.
Is what I'm hearing Robert saying, I think it's a really good point.
Honestly, that would be pretty cool.
It would be cool. I agree, like on records on Main, if it was tie dye like during seventies week or something.
But we're, we're not debating. Let's just preface it that everyone has their own definition of wacky.
The idea of vinyl, and I get where you're coming from, it's a less of a cost investment in it. But the reality is, is vinyl is easier to remove. So if there are problems with it. It can change, people can complain on Yelp about it. And they'll change it rather than this etching in the window and then they have to replace the glass. Then they're gonna double down. We could just.
That painting is beautiful. Fairly easily to remove and, uh, easily accessible as far as like, don't, I don't think that it's overly cost prohibitive.
It's from the standpoint of of labor intensive. You're having an artist come in and actively paint it. That would be, so in terms of cost, correct, yeah, they may do it, you're act, I always welcome to do it yourself, but like there is a. That is probably a cheaper method of the ones, but maybe or may not, but like there is a person that comes in and has to kind of paint that. So that is, I'm also fine with whatever you guys decide, I want consensus on, so I may comment, that is more. Kind of what I've heard and kind of seen and if the consensus to is to not allow it, then great.
Has it come up since you've been here?
I, how many times, or the sign folks?
Yeah, I had one, um, I've had to, I've had a couple that I've had to kind of say, no, we can't do vinyl, um. One that kind of pushed back to say, well, this is how we actually handle these things. So I can, I mean, we could look at further outreach or research, I'm happy to do that, um, but I have noticed that like that is a. Can be cost prohibitive, um, it is a especially on downtown when. Especially on Main Street, when it is something that you're more likely putting it on the glass. Um, it also provides another option that isn't necessarily screwing a sign into the building as well, um, and so that's, that's kind of. Where at is, it is a, it is, the biggest thing for vinyl is just the cost effective nature of it and the temporary nature of it.
This may be a dumb question, but we're just talking about the downtown historic district, right? Or is this citywide?
This would be, so citywide vinyl is allowed on windows. The only place that is not allowed is in the downtown districts.
I could say I like the temporary nature of it.
I do too, like if somebody wants to put like sale up or.
Well, not, not so much that, but you know.
That's what I was saying.
Well, but.
It's more as tenants switch out.
Exactly, yeah, and it's, it's not permanently altering a building.
I do.
Like a, to your point, like screen in a metal sign or etching, etching a historic, an original window.
Right, that feels silly.
I think a more important question in the composition of it is what percentage of the glass you're going to allow to be.
And so our code already does address that, so window signs, signs, any window sign. Um, shall be located in the lower or upper twenty five percent of the window area. And then it does define further how large that sign can be as well. Um, so it is, um, until we reviewed from a kind of sign permit standpoint. And this actually does go into a little bit of the next recommendation. Um, which would be to allow for administrative review of signage. We currently do not review. Um, certificates of appropriateness for signs. It's not called out on the major and minor alterations chart. Again, I would not be looking at content of the sign, but it could be things like placement of the sign, um, how it's.
Percentage of the window covered.
Yeah, and so that, that gets looked at no matter what, so that is one thing. Downtown signs, we have certain sizes that are allowed, et cetera. So it is being looked at for kind of that piece of sign and any sign in the city of Littleton requires a permit. Um, kind of having the C O A piece of it, if we wanted to go that route, um. Would allow for a little bit more control over kind of, um, where signs are placed on a building, um. And maybe how they're attached. Right now, and I'm sure you've seen a few signs in downtown, there are some, and nothing would be retroactive if the sign is up right now. We're not gonna make anyone take this down if it wouldn't necessarily need a C O A approval, um. And so. It's more kind of like you can see on certain buildings where these features kind of have the square above a window and you would think. Fit a sign through there and there are some where it's kind of outside of it, it's a projecting sign in an odd spot, et cetera. That don't necessarily make sense for kind of where signs would go or should be, um. The flip side of this again though is that it is a, it would be a staff level approval. Those happen much more quickly. They don't require coming before. H P C, I don't think a sign, again with that temporary nature of a sign, warrants coming before a body of, in a public hearing. Um, so. That's kind of the process and that would be kind of more control over kind of saying where and how they look, um.
Could you dictate color?
So we don't dict, so where color comes into play for us in first kind of C O As in general. Is if the surface is unpainted masonry, stone, brick, et cetera. That requires a C O A because you are alterate, altering kind of chemically almost this material. Also generally affecting its longevity, if you paint it. Um, and color can be used to kind of mitigate impact of something, so say painting rooftop equipment. That's where color kind of starts to come into play. But right now, a building downtown that has already been painted can be painted fuchsia. And that is because paint is temporary. That is like, like, it, it mixes here and there, but for the most part, the idea is that. It's a painted surface, you can change that color.
I wanted to mention, by the way, as to vinyl, I I was just looking up vinyl signage on your windows. And it's fairly typical for like coffee shops and stuff like that and honestly, I've never noticed it before. Typically is on, is, is intrusive, although that doesn't mitigate your fear.
This sounds like a no brainer to me. I strongly support your item number three.
I am curious on the back, going back to the vinyl, if maybe there is a way to say like a certain level of vinyl. Like it can't just be like you cut it from your cricket and you put it up yourself kind of thing, like it, it's like, it, you, it's, it's like a printer. It's like a laser printer, but it cuts stuff like it'll.
It's like a C and C machine for.
Yeah, but I wonder if that may help, Robert, like if there's some sort of professional quality to the vinyl instead of like a D I Y. Thing or.
The thickness of vinyl, I don't know if you'd be able to tell the difference, yeah.
So there is a provision currently in relation to say hand painted signs. That's allowed by, if painted by a sign contractor, so there are ways that we could say. It has to be done by a company, like it has to be done. That is a potential, you're more likely to get higher quality or at least not the at home. Cricket situation. Um, doesn't prevent against absolutely everything.
Yeah.
There are, we could look at kind of ensuring quality in terms of that. We can look at that option.
Wonder if there's an A S T M standard having to do with vinyl lettering.
American Society of what? A S T M, American Society of what?
American, uh. Standards and test methods. There's A S T M for just about everything and then you can put into your requirements that vinyl. Vinyl siding, signage that meets the requirements of A S T M, whatever.
I'm thinking about it more statistically than I think it is so good. I think by opening up the vinyl, in today's world, there are a thousand different things. That are offered by vinyl, you know, people wrap their cars in vinyl and all this other stuff. I just think it's really opening it up. Now, we can't dictate color and stuff like that. But I just think it's opening up a palette to some guy who comes and says, gee, I wanna open this shop and wow, man, I like that, you know. Whatever, it's, I I just think it's gonna downgrade the historic district as you drive down by. Some people's selection of what they think is, is good.
You have to come, you have to understand that the people who are renting these spaces are really established businesses. It's not cheap to be on Main Street. So I get what you're saying in terms of that, but I think that a lot of your apprehension or what you might be worried about wouldn't even be an applicable tenant. On downtown Main Street. I'm not saying that that's a way to, that we should bank behind, but I, I, I think that.
But you can be a serious business and still have wacky ideas for signage. Yeah. So can I ask a procedural sort of thing? So item one was giving staff discretion to waive requirements.
Not, I wouldn't put it that way. It's essentially giving discretion that the decision criteria for C O A. No, supersedes the, uh, downtown design standards, um, that are enumerated in the code. For things that are new construction additions or alterations to the exterior.
So if we move forward with recommendation number one and council approved it. Would you then have the authority to waive the vinyl? Uh, requirement or the, the vinyl prohibition? We're operating at two different levels here. One is sort of a, a macro. Across the board, uh, power. And then we get down into these more, uh, explicit detail oriented, uh, requirements. But, but whether we vote on it or Sarah votes on it, this is about control.
And the third. So the down, so the specific, what I'm kind of talking, this is, okay, wait. Can I get, okay, it's not showing up on the screen unfortunately, but, um. The, when I say design standards within code, we have a piece of code that notes out. Um, materials, percentages that are allowed, where things go, maximum height, I'm just trying to get this. Um, looking at building types, et cetera, the sign code is something separate. The sign code is something separate. So this first piece is really only meant to cover those design standards that are covered on, or development standards that are covered under, um, the specific, um, duh 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 duh, code section that specifically has that applicability of saying that this applies to the alterations, duh 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 duh. Sign code is separate, it's within that chapter or article, but is separate. So it wouldn't cover signage.
But the reason it wouldn't cover signage really gets into legalistic minutia of what you have authority to waive versus what you don't. It's weird to me that you would have authority to waive the fifteen foot thing, but you don't have authority to waive material used in signage.
So one thing we don't, we don't currently review signage for COA, so that wouldn't pop up for there's, there's that piece.
Well then where's all this language about etching and-
The second side of things, well, the second side of things is with vinyl is not saying that your building can have more than a fifteen foot expanse is going to be proved by the fact that historically speaking, this would have made sense. Vinyl signage, historically speaking, was not a thing. So to allow it would actually likely would be har- like, it's harder to kind of prove through our standards. Now, you could, there is the standard of course of having something look more contemporary, the temporary nature, the how it affects. So I don't think it's something that we shouldn't be allowing at all, but in this instance, that piece wouldn't make as much sense because this is allowing for something that is new to go in, while waiving of these standards for kind of the, say the fifteen foot length wall thing is essentially, that's the new thing. And we're saying, no, this is a historic building, and this doesn't make sense because this is a new requirement that would not have necessarily been historically there. So that's kind of the, it's probably a very long winded way of saying that, but-
Sarah, I'm not sure why this is not looking-
That's totally fine.
It should allow me to drag it over to the screen, but it's not doing it, so.
That's fine, we can just throw the presentation back up, it's fine, or, yeah, that's, that's-
All right, my apologies, we should-
No, you're okay.
Tested it before, beforehand.
Totally fine, thank you for coming down here.
Yeah.
Um, duh 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 duh, yeah, so that kind of, I don't know if that helps, um. And so, yeah, so allow for administrative review of signage. Um, now this would be introducing a new process that is not there currently. So where the vinyl may open up opportunities, I would say that this one could be viewed as putting another roadblock in place. So that would be something to kind of mull over and consider. Um, previous downtowns I've worked have had, um, kind of guidelines around signage, and if we want to start exploring this, I could look at what other jurisdictions are doing. Um, and maybe provide examples and kind of see how their process works with signage. Um, the previous, again, my previous, this was when I was in, uh, Macon actually, and it went to the board for it, which I don't think, I think that's taking it a step too far, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be good, maybe just to have a review of signage and what other similar jurisdictions are doing. And maybe just even some examples of vinyl signage and what they might look like, maybe good and not so good examples.
Or just asking those same jurisdictions when you're talking about signage, also say, what do you do about the vinyl question? Best practices.
I do think if, like the other standards that you said were in the code, like they have to be at the top or the bottom and only a certain amount of the window, hopefully that also would mitigate some wackiness if you only have a small portion that you can use, like you can't just put like a giant unicorn dragon something, you know?
Unicorn would be dope.
I know, well, and for some businesses that might be good, but-
Tie dye, unicorn.
I mean, we have two separate, I don't-
Also, you could technically do a mural in downtown on an already painted surface of a unicorn dragon.
That's exactly, yeah.
Right.
Throwing it out there, that's another thing.
And it depends on the business, maybe there's a unicorn dragon business that would really benefit from that, but it can only be in the lower third.
The unicorn dragon lobby right now is very upset with us, yes.
But yeah, I think maybe just some more, maybe s- just some examples and some more information about how others are doing it would be good.
Okay, great meeting, guys. One more thing.
Get one more.
One more. And we've kind of hinted at this, which is, we don't really have an amendment process for previously approved COAs. Right now, it's either, does what you wanna do fall under what could be handled by staff? Or is it something that has to go before HPC? Um, and so when it pops up, we try to find a way to do it as staff level as possible, especially on ones that we've seen a few times. Um, but there isn't really a process right now enumerated for something that y'all have seen doesn't necessarily fall under something that staff can do. Cause our major minor rate, minor alterations chart has kind of, um-
Handcuffs.
A little bit, yeah, so there are moments where it's, um, I'm trying to think of a good. So pretty much a lot of things that are kind of visible from the right of way, or highly visible from the right of way or on the front facade, um, comes to y'all. So one example would be repair replacement of existing feature, introducing new design elements visible from the public right of way. That comes to y'all right now, and that covers a lot of things. Um, any additions, new constructions absolutely should come to y'all, but if it is tweaking of something that's already been approved, there is no like tweaking provision? Like if it is something that is- Yeah, so there's not a good kind of spot to say, we've already reviewed this, ultimately this change is a change that would be noticeable shift from what was approved, but isn't something that is overarching, kind of altering kind of what's going on, it isn't gonna have a great impact, it's not like, oh, we had a storefront here and we want to fully shift it over here now instead and put and do X, Y, and Z, but these kind of smaller changes, is there a way, or is there some level of comfortab- comfortability with y'all for it to come to just staff? And it would still have to meet all of the criteria, would still need to kind of-
Yeah, Robert, Robert wants to see everything, he's joking.
I mean-
Who determines what's material and what's-
Yeah, and what these parameters are, because like if we're speaking about it specifically, not specifically, there were some times, there are some situations where like the window was broken into four and then they wanted, it needed to be broken into six for support or whatever. Like that feels like something that could be handled, that-
I know, like the mulleons and the, like that, I think that's something that we might wanna see.
I'm gonna just say no, I'm outnumbered. You can't change anything, you can't do anything without us saying yes or no.
I just think that there would have to be some really clear criteria about like what is considered de minimis and what, you know, and yeah.
Again, what are other jurisdictions doing?
Yeah, and I think, yeah, maybe just like a proposal to look at and, yeah.
I could get comfortable with it, I just would wanna have some pretty clear-
And we wanna know how you are gonna vote on it.
We wanna be in your brain.
Yeah, we want, you need to show us that we can trust you with this.
Well, no, I don't know, yeah, okay, was that a joke?
I, I gleaned that part, I gleaned as much on that one.
That was a joke.
It's hard to assume, it is fun.
That was totally a joke, guys. I was making a joke.
So is our consensus that on number one, you're getting, uh, support-
Yeah.
To move forward, and two, three, and four are all-
Research.
Best practices.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, no, I think that's great. One other thing that we didn't really hint on a lot tonight, we mostly talked about code, is that major and minor alterations chart.
Hmm, I saw that.
I think from a staff perspective, I think there's a few things on here that could be handled by staff. Um, to the point of making things easier on folks as much as possible, and where it makes sense, having it be more of an administrative process over a full public hearing process could be an option. Um, some of the things that I, um, some of the in-kind replacement pieces, um, would be something to maybe contemplate and look at. So the in-kind replacement, any of the falling features located on a facade or side elevation of a principal structure, windows, doors, porches, chimneys, stoops, handrails, skylights. Um, in-kind replacement means that, yes, it is replacing what is there, but it is replacing it with the exact same material in the exact same appearance, and that is coming before y'all. So-
I think that maybe came from when we've been burned in the past.
Okay.
Potentially.
And I think when it comes to windows-
And I do think it's- And when it comes to windows, I think there is a level of, um, the historic nature of these things really matter. Right now, this makes no distinction between if this window is historic or already been replaced. And so that's some of the piece of it, um, and so it may be something that if we didn't have a chance to really look at this um, kind of right before this meeting, if we can take a private for a next month study session probably, um, cause this will be an ongoing conversation, um, maybe if we can look at a few of those, those things, um.
And I think maybe like what, uh, again, kind of, uh, maybe as you're researching the other jurisdictions, just if they have charts and maybe other practices from other area, I think that could just be folded into the research so we know what others are doing.
I do think figuring out a way to make this work would be really beneficial, but also we need to safeguard what exists.
Oh, absolutely, and I'm not saying that everything should be administrative by any means, um. Um, like there is a benefit to this kind of public process that I wholeheartedly stand behind, but if there are pieces that you're comfortable with us pulling back that are maybe more minor or could have kind of, kind of be thought through in that way, might be an opportunity to kind of streamline a few things, um. Others, most of the COAs I've done here have been before y'all. I think I've done one or two kind of staff, um, ones. And so most of them do right now come, come before you guys.
I'm hearing hesitation on-
That is totally fine, I figured there would be, that was assumed.
One or two on here where you think, you anticipate it might be a no brainer that we relinquish control, I would say bring it specifically before us, but not an open ended discussion about all of them on the turn.
Yeah, we need to vote on each one, is basically what he's saying.
I'm using the opposite.
Yeah, I think maybe the ones-
I'm saying if, if you and staff want any of these exits in the third column to move to the second column, it's a case by case basis, and we'll have to vote on them one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but generally, there's a hesitation to make a lot of-
Absolutely, and that wouldn't be happening tonight, it was more just kind of opening that conversation of what are the ones we can explore if you're comfortable with?
We're comfortable exploring it.
We'll hear your proposal.
Correct, cause we would love to make it easier. I'm, I'm just controlling, in general.
One side of your head is the, uh, property owner head, and the other is the control free-
And they fight all the time.
Historic preservation commission, and they're in conflict.
Yeah, it's exhausting, guys.
Sept preservation can be used as a great tool for economic-
I love that, good job.
That's why it has a benefit in downtowns.
I agree, I agree.
Absolutely right.
I love that.
Perfect.
Absolutely, well, thank you, I will-
Good job, guys.
Research the three, kind of start to pull together, kind of what, um, maybe figure out what other jurisdictions handle at staff level versus not, um, and bring that back, um, and then likely August will be the next meeting.
And I would love to look, still look at a way to communicate with property owners, I know that, and I, I'll help with that.
Great.
Awesome.
I love to, thanks, everyone.
So we're agreeing that we will meet in August, it won't get pushed to September?
If it gets pushed to September, it is a staff capacity thing, and I will let everyone know. Um, but yeah, that's kind of, it should be fine to come before in August, um, so yeah.
I know.
Okay.
I know. All right, I will adjourn this meeting of the HPC at seven fifty-three.
Great.